...council meeting. I will first call to order the redevelopment agency meeting. First item of business is to approve the minutes of August 12, 2015. Customer Nichols.
Move to approve minutes.
Board member Nichols.
Second.
A motion by board member Nichols and a second by board member Hanson. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board member Rice?
Aye.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Chair Rall?
Yes.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Haga?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Item 2B, discussion on possible action regarding resolution number 177, approve the 2016 annual meeting schedule for the City of West Jordan Redevelopment Agency.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by board member Haga and a second by board member Hanson. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Haga?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Rice?
Aye.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Chair Rall?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Item 2C, discussion on possible action regarding resolution number 178, authorizing the chair to execute a purchase and sell agreement with Jordan Star LLC for the acquisition of 19.4 acre parcel located approximately 9204 South and 5600 West. A vote.
Yes.
Jeremy Olson now will field any questions and give an explanation to anything that you need.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The item 2C on your agenda gives the agency the authority to purchase approximately 19 acres of property that's located approximately 56 West and 90 South. This is the first step in a two-step process. Then the next December 15 meeting, there'd also be a transfer that will allocate funds to make that purchase. But that's essentially the item and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Jeremy? Just like you did. Thanks. Return to the agency. Member Nichols.
Move to approve resolution 178.
Second. A motion by board member Nichols and a second by board member McConaughey. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board member Haga?
Yes.
Board member Rice?
Aye.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Chair Rall?
Yes.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
I need a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting and convene the municipal building authority meeting.
So moved.
A motion by board member Rice and a second by board member McConaughey. Discussion? Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none? I call to order the municipal building authority meeting. Item 2A, approve the minutes of June 10, 2015 as presented.
So moved.
Second. A motion by board member Hanson and a second by board member McConaughey. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Haga?
Yes.
Chair Rall?
Yes.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Board member Rice?
Aye.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 2B, discussion on possible action regarding the resolution number 86, approving the 2016 annual meeting schedule for the City of West Jordan Municipal Building Authority.
I move to approve resolution number 86.
Second. I have a motion by board member Hanson and a second by board member Nichols. Discussion? Let's vote.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Board member Rice?
Aye.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Haga?
Yes.
Chair Rall?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
I need a motion to adjourn the re- I mean the municipal building authority meeting and convene the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District Meeting.
So moved. Second.
A motion by board member McConaughey and a second by board member Rice. Discussion? See none? Let's vote.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Haga?
Yes.
Chair Rall?
Yes.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Board member Rice?
Aye.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
This is item 2A, approve the minutes of June 10, 2015 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by board member Hanson, second by Chair Rall. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Chair Rall?
Yes.
Board member Haga?
Yeah.
Board member Rice?
Aye.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 2B, discussion on possible action regarding resolution 15-219, approving the 2016 annual meeting schedule for the West Jordan Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District.
So moved.
Motion by board member Haga, second by board member Rice. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Board member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Southworth?
Aye.
Board- Chair Rall?
Yes.
Board member Haga?
Yes.
And board member Rice?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
We need a motion to adjourn the Fairway Estates Special Service Recreation District meeting and reconvene at so- uh, the West Jordan City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion by board member Hanson, second by board member Haga. Discussion? Oh, there's no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Call back to order the West Jordan City Council meeting on December 2, 2015. First item on the agenda is a presentation. If the council would please step down. Steve Swanson, would you please come forward? Steve Swanson is the man that makes recommendations as to where Smiths will spend their money. And our city council is really glad that you- that Smiths has chosen to spend the money in our city. And we now have four stores in our city. The 70th South on Redwood Road store just recently remodeled. The 90th South on Redwood Road Marketplace, the one where I show. 90th South and 40th West? Soon to be remodeled.
Good.
90th South and 40th West newly remodeled. The brand new and wonderful Marketplace at 78 South and 5600 West. That has brought must-needed goods to our public that live out in the western side of our city. And they've awaited that so long. And what a wonderful, magnificent building that is. The total recent investment of Smiths in our city through the remodels and the new construction totals around $45 million. And we really appreciate the partnership with our city and the valuable service that you do to our community. And we hope it's as long as it has been in the future. So we really appreciate it, Steve. And if you'd accept this from the city as a token of our partnership together for the citizens, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Communications, city manager?
No real parts, except you may want to congratulate Chief Diamond for getting his master's degree. So we all- it's nice to have him still working at advanced degrees. That's all I had.
Darian?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Robert? A vote.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Brian?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a heads up, just more of an update for Mayor of City Council. The Council Central Irrigation Project is moving forward. We now have 20 controllers installed. We're hopeful by the first of spring, all the parks will have those new controllers and we'll be able to start monitoring remotely. That's all I got tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. David? Wendell?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that we've just completed today the first day of a two-day audit by the state of Utah for our stormwater permit. I think it's going okay. We still have one more day left. And once they get done with it tomorrow, then they'll have a report to us within 30 days. And then we have 30 days to respond on the findings that they have. So we just want to let you know that that was going on.
Thank you. Chief McElroy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one update on our fleet. We just placed our orders for two new ambulances that were approved in the budget. We should take delivery of those February 1st. That's two new ambulances that we place to the currently having service. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to let you know, we will be fully staffed with officers in the police department as of Monday. So we are authorized 111 officers and we will have those 111 officers employed on Monday.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Rice?
Thank you, Mayor. As I've been focusing on thankfulness recently, I wanted to bring to light a couple of bright lights that live here in West Jordan in the 4th district. Crimes are problems we're all facing, but I want to share with you an example of what can be done and give thanks to those who are volunteering their own time and energy getting creative to make their neighborhood safer. The Island Park neighborhood seems to be getting targeted for car break-ins, home invasions, and other such property crimes. To combat the problem, a neighborhood Facebook page was set up, a neighborhood watch page. And it has been a tremendous success. When residents see something suspicious, they report the problem and in seconds a good portion of the neighborhood knows of the issue. And it has been a great unifying force. But the problems persisted, frustrating the neighborhood. But then something amazing happened and it was quite inspiring. One of the neighbors, David Schuman, started doing night watches. He calls into the police department to let them know that he's on watch and he keeps an eye on the safety of the neighborhood so everyone else can sleep soundly and securely. He posts on the Facebook page when he has seen an issue or reports that all is well and quiet at nights. He will even text you if you leave your garage door open by accident. He's incredible. Through his proactivity, selfless service, and neighborliness, he has inspired others to start taking shifts as well. Now that's leadership. I am grateful for good people like David Schuman, who step forward in times of trouble and rather than complaining or asking what can be done for them, figure out what they can do. The change a few good people make is, for this neighborhood at least, a tremendous and worthy experience. And it is worthy of high, high praise. And I thank them for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember, Councilwoman Rice, for that story. That's great to hear. And I'm sitting here, this is my second-to-last meeting. I could do this two more times, sitting in this seat tonight, and one more, and being a little reflective. It's, you know, that just reminds me of all kinds of stories like that over the years. And I'm so appreciative of what I've seen out of the citizenry of this city. And grateful, you know, I get a couple more chances to do this, but I'll just say this tonight to all within earshot. Thank you for your service, your time, your friendship. And I'll leave it at that for this evening. But thank you.
Councilman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Chief. Nicely done. One other comment was with respect to the oil spill this week in the Provo River. Some may have heard about that. I just wanted to share a little bit about what our Conservancy district is, has done and continues to do to protect our water supply. You may have heard about the thousand gallons of crude oil that reach the Provo River. For those who don't know, that is our water supply. When something like that happens, obviously, the first thing is you get nervous. But the nice thing is, is that our investment over the years in the Conservancy district, and not just West Jordan alone, but the communities around us that also support the district, provided an infrastructure such that they had a water supply to continue to provide water, literally, without a hiccup to us. Even though the water was, the water connection was severed for several days. We should be proud of having a system like that. And when we pay that water bill, just think about this incident in which we were protected. Furthermore, I wanted to give an update, an email that I received yesterday. Part of our future planning in the Conservancy district, for those who are where I serve on the Water Board, it was provided or appointed, rather, by the governor through a nomination from this council to serve on that. And I'm happy to serve there. But as that Water Board meets, we receive updates occasionally, but more importantly, just when something like this happens. And it's nice to know what happens. And the response time this week was phenomenal. Not just by the Conservancy district, but the emergency responders who went to the scene to take care of it for us. Just so that you have the comfort, this is a quote from our staff at the Conservancy district, "No crude oil entered the drinking water system and no service interruptions occurred." They've reconfigured, the district has reconfigured our water supply to take Provo River waters directly to the Salt Lake Aqueduct. And officially, as of today, they began taking water deliveries through the Central High Point project for the first time, which provided an alternate source of water for us. We as a community should be very proud of that. And just remember that each time, I mean, we look at our water bills and we get a little frustrated at the expense and then it goes up. This is the value of that. And we have a important, you know, sorry for taking so much time, but I wanted to provide the public with that update. And anyway, very, very proud of the Conservancy district and their response team, in addition to the Central Utah Water Conservancy district, which has oversight in that area, and the emergency responders. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Councilmember Haga?
Thanks, Mayor. First thing, I wanted to thank our city attorney, Darian Alcorn, today. You know, I've had some questions from residents and businesses concerning code violations and come to learn that through education from her, how and why the process was set up. I've been on the council two years. It's taken me two years to figure that out, but I wanted to thank Darian for doing that. Now I know how to respond because I get a lot of calls on how to respond to code enforcement and why we do it the way we do it. So I appreciate that. And then the other thing, and this, this is more Jeff Haga, but I, it's gone public. And there's some rumor that somehow I sued my own city. That's not true. I did make a claim and notice to complain, followed by the mayor to the district attorney on the same fact. But as of today, through legal counsel, my counsel advised me, mainly from my own heart, because I would never, ever sue my own city. I've lived here going almost 40 years. And, you know, there, I, I had a document drawn up by my attorney today and I delivered it to our city clerk, which she certified. So just publicly, I wanted to announce that. The council knows why. The other thing, the last thing I wanted to talk about really is decorum. You know, there's been a lot of residents come to stand before us, you know, and when you're, you're on a council like this, you're, you're kind of governed by what they call Robert's rules. And those of you that have been on boards or other things, that's how we're supposed to conduct ourselves. And sitting down with this city manager and actually Darian Alcorn, I was going to suggest, if there's no objections to the council during the retreat, perhaps we have somebody of training educate us a little more on decorum up on the dais. And I'm not going to go any further than that other than say, sometimes knowledge helps you get where you need to go. And we're always going to have disagreement. That's the nature of America, but we should have civility. And so I'm hoping during retreat, we can do that. And I, again, I'm going to trust our city manager and the mayor, who's our chair, and I've also discussed it with him also, that maybe we do that during the retreat. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
One item tonight, but I'll say that for remarks at the end. Thank you.
I have one item. We have scheduled for next Wednesday night, a interviews for Planning Commission. And we had three that could make it last council meeting, but Councilmember Hanson is one of them. So she'll have to withdraw since she's applied for the position. We have six applicants. Is there anyone else besides Councilmember Rice and myself that can be here for interviews next Wednesday night?
I'll help with you, Mayor.
Okay, so we got four. Okay, good. Great. That's all I had. We will now move to citizens' comments. I have many signed up to speak, and I'll ask each if they want to speak now or during the item they've signed up for, so they have an opportunity to make sure they're heard. The first one, Alexandra Eframo.
Mayor and council, I'd like to please pause a moment and let's meditate. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faith, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Once again, I'm waiting, I'm waiting, since April 29th, I'm still waiting. And some of the comments that were just made here by proper decorum. April 29th, our council member was totally out of order when she threw a pencil, also throwing a pencil and calling somebody a liar.
Point of border, those things are not true. These are personal attacks.
I would, I would allow her to keep speaking. She has a constitutional right to address our council.
I'm stating what was in, I was present here. I know what happened. The pencil was thrown. Allegations were thrown at the mayor. And also interruption during the entire council meeting without waiting to be called. I was present. I was there, sir. I'm still waiting for the apology. If it'll take 10 years, if I live that long, I will continue asking for an apology because that is proper decorum. And also, I want to compliment Councilmember Nichols. I appreciate your stating things that happened at your committee. One of our council members went to a meeting, I've wanted, I don't know how many different committee meetings we have, and that person said, "Wow, I went to that meeting. Wow, I learned a lot." Period. That was inappropriate. You're on the council. When you're going to go to your various committee meetings, it's nice if you can tell us in a couple sentences what happened. What was the purpose of the meeting? What went on? Rather than just saying, "I learned a lot." Sure, that's nice. I'm glad you learned a lot. But what about the city of West Jordan and the citizens of West Jordan? So I'm just asking for people that are going to be on the committee, various committees, don't just say, "I attended it." Give one or two or three lines because that happens at the Jordan School District meeting. They always go into a little bit of detail about what happened with the committee that they served on. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy McDougall, would you like to speak now or?
I'll speak during item.
Okay. Don Moss, would you like to speak now or during item 8A? Tim Williams, 7C? Please. Oh, you speak during the, okay, sorry. Carleen Logan, now or during the item?
I'll speak during the item.
Okay. Michael Dover? Mayor, Mayor Kuzel just wanted to read into the record.
Mayor, if I, if I may ask a quick question? You, you commented about one of the, one of the residents who wants to speak during item 8A?
I was just reading off of the document.
I, I was just going to point out that 8A is a business item, not a public hearing, so there wouldn't be any public comment during that.
Don, now would be the time to speak on that item. Sorry.
And 8A is what, let's just make sure we're on the same page here. Which number is that? That's the view of 5600 West, correct?
Is that the item? Okay, now would be the time to speak. Councilmember Haga?
Mayor, since it's an important topic, I would like to say we should suspend the rules for this, this gentleman and allow him speak for, on, on that business item 8A.
There's a motion to suspend the rules and allow Mr. Moss to speak during the business item.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Haga and a second by Councilmember Southworth. Discussion of the motion? Councilmember McConaughey?
I don't know that I understand the motions. The motion to allow for public comment during business item 8A when we get to that point?
Yes, it would be the suspension of the rules on item 8A.
I would speak against that because then it would follow that we should do that for all and that breaks from what we typically do and why we have this citizen comment period. I'd have to address that anyway. I, I don't see a significant need to change our format.
Thanks. I just.
Councilmember Haga?
My point to the motion is this is a stakeholder in our city. We're talking about investing in our city. And it is a business item and there are rules we have to live by, by decorum. But, you know, sometimes we get confused as far as all, we're going to have obviously a lot of folks talking to us tonight. And I would like to have the opportunity to have the direct conversation on that item from this individual. That would be my only reason why I gave him privilege on that. Thanks, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rall?
Yes.
Vote passes 40.
Okay, Don, we will allow you to speak during the business item 8A. We will suspend the rules. And I apologize for calling all of your names, but I don't know how long tonight will go. And I've been accused of not allowing people to speak on the item because we get late in the evening and people have to leave. So I just wanted to make sure that you wanted to wait and speak on the item. So apologize for that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak or any citizens' comments? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Paxton Geiman. The address is 7380 Silver King Circle. I'm here on behalf of the applicant for item 8A. And I'm wondering if I would be afforded the same opportunity with a suspension of the rules to address the item at the same time, other than talking now?
You will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak or any citizen's comments? Please. Please.
Dirk Burton, 4492 Black Elk Way, West Jordan. Thank you, council and mayor, and congratulations, Chief Diamond. I would like to speak on item 8B, on the funding for the parks. I think our parks, we're fortunate to have lots of good parks in our city, and our parks are important to our city, and they get used a lot, and I like to use the parks as well. I think our Parks Department did a fantastic job with what they have to do in maintaining those parks, and I appreciate what they put forth. I agree that maintaining the parks is very important, and we need some money to maintain those parks and continue to care for them. However, I'm thinking on using the money by putting a fee on our water bill may not be the best way to fund our parks. Our parks do need that. My idea is, if we took that money out of, from our property taxes in order to fund those parks, and then earmarked money or set some money apart specifically for that purpose, I'm afraid, first of all, the amount of money we put on this water bill isn't going to be sufficient to cover the needs the parks have. They have lots of needs, and we need to care for those needs, in addition to additional sap that they need and supplies and equipment. The other thing is, if we put that money on the water bill, if someone has a difficult time paying their water bill, which some do, this will make it even more difficult for them to pay their water bill. And then if they can't afford to pay their water bill, because the park fees add on there, it's bad enough, they already have the street lights on that, and then their water gets turned off, I don't think that's an appropriate way to turn the water off, because they didn't pay their fee for their parks. Also, that's not a fair way to charge our residents for the parks. The poor people are getting a higher percentage of that bill than people who have more money. In other words, it's two dollars, or one dollar fifty, or five dollars, whatever that amount is, for per person. So the poor people are paying a larger, larger percentage to cover their park fees than people who have additional income. So the poor people, we're punishing them even more difficult on doing the park fee. And we take that extra money and put it in the parks, what's gonna keep us from taking other money? Well, the parks have that extra money now, we can pull some other money outside of parks, from property tax or whatever, and put to this other cause we have to do, what's gonna keep us from doing that? They're gonna be in the same position they're in now, if we do it that way. If we take some money and dedicate it, earmark it from our property tax, now, I'm not proposing we raise our property tax, I think we should keep it where it is. But take the money that we've already gotten from that, and then put that into them, and then give that to them, and make sure they get that each year, so we can take care of our parks, and take care of our city, and make this a good place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South. I guess I gotta object to allowing these two individuals to talk about the, the business item. There's lots of business items that, that affect the public, as well as these individuals as investors. And we're not allowed to have a conversation, ask questions, or receive questions. So, the way that it appears to me right now, is we're giving special treatment because they're investors, and I don't like that. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Southworth?
Just a quick comment, I really appreciate what Steve just said. And the reason why we haven't done that in the past is, our meetings, that would extend the length of the meeting. But I've always, I haven't had it set well with me, and maybe I throw this out, we've got two councilmen-elect out here, the other members are gonna be here, maybe that's something to think about in the future. We have these business items, and just because it's a business item and not a public hearing, doesn't mean it's not important to the community. And, and I wonder sometimes if we, we don't, we expect somebody to come and comment before, in public comment, on something that we haven't even discussed, and they don't even have, they haven't heard the, the, the report that's given, they don't have that background, they don't have that context to make the conversation, or have a conversation about the comment on. And so maybe a, a challenge or something to think about in the cities you go, or the councils you go into, your strategic planning, maybe it makes sense to, to allow some provision for some public, public comment when business items come up. And maybe it doesn't, maybe that lengthens the, our meeting so long that you really can't get business done, I don't know, but it's probably worth a conversation. It's just something that's been weighing on my mind for quite some time, and it seems appropriate to bring that up now, as I am leaving into meetings. So, anyhow, there you go.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
Mayor and council, David Murphy, 9476 Overly Court. As a former resident, I'm taking off my engineer hat, as a former resident of the town, I'm speaking in favor of finding funding for the park system, item 8B. Few words, dandelions, thistles, fragmities, and tumbleweeds. I have traveled this town up and down, and walked its washes, walked its hills, walked its parks. And as a former resident, I had a lot of trouble maintaining my lot from the invasive species, dandelions and so forth. And the myriad of other weeds that we have to take care of as property owners. West Jordan is a big property owner, and I build a lot of things as the, one of the engineers in the city, for the residents, all these parks that we have, and all the park strips along our arterial streets. And over time, I have seen some of the degradation that happens after the trees fall prey to disease, and we don't have the strength monetarily to replace those trees. So, my quest here for you tonight, and, and your job, hopefully, is to find a funding mechanism that works for the citizens, that works for the Parks Department, and that helps us maintain our, our city. I still call it my city. I have had property here, even though I wasn't a resident here for the last eight years. But I'm so close to this city, just over the border in South Jordan, that I still see everything that I come to work for every day. And I take a measure of pride in what we've been able to build here, and I wanna see it maintained. And so, please find a way, and a mechanism, a funding mechanism, to maintain our parks in perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Seize the day, as they say. Zach Jacob, 7654 Yellowwood Lane. I would like to also, just to speak briefly on the parks funding. I, I believe an increase in parks funding is necessary. I've had discussions with several of you about this, and, and with my neighbors and my friends, and it's important for people to also realize that our parks funding doesn't just fund parks, it funds our Parks Department, which takes care of our streetscapes and other open space and things like that, that are very important. My concern is whether, if we open an enterprise fund for parks, for money that's earmarked for parks, how exactly that balances with general fund money that's also used for parks currently? In my opinion, and this is just my opinion, take it for what it's worth, it's not official for another couple weeks. In my opinion, you either have an enterprise fund, or you have a general fund to fund a purpose, but not both. So if, uh, uh, an enterprise fund is what's desired for parks, then let's have an enterprise fund for parks, and let's fund it appropriately, so that it is enough, that it's sufficient, that it's maybe even a little more than sufficient to not just maintain, but to, say vastly improve, uh, the, the look of our city. Let's also then reduce whatever general funding source is going to parks now to compensate. Because I don't believe that it's good fiscal practice or good transparency for the citizens of our city to have a general fund, parks money that could be reallocated or de-allocated at any time, based on, oh, we, we need money over here, or we need money over there, so we'll just, you know, swipe it out of the budget here and put it in over there. Whereas an enterprise fund is more dedicated, an enterprise fund is probably a good idea, but let's have one or the other, not both. That's my only comment, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was just wondering, I got here a little late, could I be checked in to talk on that business item?
8A, is that the one you're?
Yeah.
Uh, we've suspended the rules, so you've been allowed to talk on that item.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will now move to consent items. I've had no one ask to pull any items. Councilmember Southworth?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Southworth, and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion? Seeing no one, let's vote.
Can I just say one thing?
Councilmember Haga?
I just wanted to thank our Parks Director, because for those of us, it would be for a lot of your time when we built the Lethers Park. That, that's for me, one of the greatest things that I've ever participated in, in our city, so I appreciate Brian for focusing on the, the issues on that. So, I'm, uh, I, I just wanted to make that comment. Thanks, Brian.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in paper.
Item 7A, public hearing item, continued from November 4th, 2015. Received, public input and considered for approval, ordinance 50-33, amending to 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code Title 13, Zoning Regulations, adding 13-8-24, mural or wall art. West Jordan City applicant, David Oakley.
Yes, as you recall, this was a little bit of an issue, and it's back here for the public comment this time.
We'll now open the public hearing portion of, do you have a question? You can address David if you'd like, yes, before I open it.
David, could, you know, because it's, it's a cultural diversity issue in our city, and very, very important. Could you give us a little more background on it?
Yes, the initial issue centered around murals that were, were painted on the side of the building at 32nd West and 78th South. We looked at the ordinance and, and tried to, at that point, the ordinance was not clearly, did not clearly define signs versus murals, which is artwork. The staff has gone back and, and tried to address that, where signs might, might be more targeted towards advertising or promoting a, a particular product, as opposed to cultural expression, which this addresses, that allows for those murals to, to go ahead without, without punishment or, or retribution. Robert Thorpe can speak to the details if there are any other details.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing for item 7A. If you're here to speak on that item, now would be the time.
Kelvin Green, 7707 Battlefield Cove. I am here to speak in opposition of the wording of this particular amendment, or this particular ordinance. I, I emailed you all the document a couple of weeks ago, I appreciate those that responded or read that. Very, very, very rarely does a city council or a planning commission, and unfortunately, I had to miss the meeting to be in Little Rock the night of the planning commission meeting, very rarely does a city council have the opportunity to deal with an ordinance that has constitutional implications. This ordinance, and, and what I will tell you is, is that I believe West Jordan City needs a, a wall art, mural ordinance. As you go to other cities that have wall art, you go down to, to the Redondo Beach area, you've got, uh, Weyland's Whaling Wall, you've got beautiful pieces of artwork that center around the community, and we need the ordinance that supports that. This ordinance does not do that. This ordinance is presumptively unconstitutional. And what I, what I would like to just share with you a little bit, Supreme Court last summer, in a, in a decision known as Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, struck down directional signs because they were content-based. Now, if the Supreme Court's willing to strike down a directional sign that has an arrow that says, hey, church is over here next week, they're gonna strike down this ordinance. If this ordinance is passed the way it is, West Jordan City will face litigation, because this regulation is content-based. It regulates commercial speech, it regulates hate speech, and it regulates obscenity. All three definitions are constitutionally vague. If you vote for this, you're voting for litigation that we all have to pay for, that you all have to pay for. And let's do the right thing. Let's look at ordinances like what Portland has. Portland's got a great ordinance, if you look at, if you, if you happen to go out and look at. Portland's got a wonderful ordinance. LA had one. Theirs is a little different, 'cause they, 'cause of some, some bans they have on all outdoor commercial advertising in LA City. But I will leave you with this, and this is what the Supreme Court said last summer. A municipal government vested with state authority has no power to restrict expression because of, because of its message, its ideas, its subject matter, or its content. The ordinance is written, restricts a whole bunch of content, and the city does not have the power to restrict that. In this circumstance, when a business wants to put up a mural, if they do something that's presumptively, or that, that seems to be offensive, we're all gonna vote, 'cause we're not gonna go there. The, the econ, the economy is gonna drive whether or not that content is good or not. So what I would request for you is to reject the wording of this ordinance, send it back, let's find something better that actually works for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Alexandra Eframo, 3735 Dunne Circle. You know, I saw in the paper this particular mural that was on the outside of the restaurant. I never thought about the political content. And those two people that are portrayed on that mural, it is, they do represent political power. Not in our country, in another country, but a lot of people, I have a lot of friends that are Mexican. But the thing is, I, but I don't know why they elected to put the mural on the outside of the building. They could've put the mural on the inside wall, on the inside of that restaurant, on one side or the other. And I would not like us to be sued because of this particular issue. I never thought about it until the previous speaker spoke on it. But we, but it, it does revert to political stance. Those two people's picture, that were political, had a lot of political power in Mexico. And all the other murals, now, Salt Lake City has a lot of murals down there, they're beautiful, but they are not of any personal, of anybody that's personal. They're all different types of murals on the various buildings, and it really looks nice, it really does. And for one thing, even on Road Home, and now they're allowed to go ahead and, and it's an incentive for those people, the homeless people, to be a little bit excited about art from their standpoint. But I, I do think we need to really table this and look into it, 'cause I certainly don't want us to be sued, and I don't want us to be paying more taxes in any lawsuits. But I never thought about the political end, and that means that maybe a Russian restaurant can put up Putin's face up there. That would be a disaster to West Jordan. But anyway, I think we really need to look at this more intently. I didn't realize that the Supreme Court had that particular issue, but I'm glad I learned about it. But I do think we need to reconsider this, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing of item 7A, and return to the council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Haga.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilman, one of my colleagues and I attended a rally after this first was, went public. Councilman McConaughey and I, and, you know, I frankly felt like they did, a sense of pride in those folks. And I don't even speak Spanish, the emotion at that rally, these are our neighbors, these are the people that work with us, these are the people that live next to us, and it's a culture that really is almost $400,000 per. the people that live next to us. And it's a culture that really is almost $400,000, or $400,000, I still have money, 400,000 people in Utah. So, but, you know, art is subjective. And I don't think we had to reinvent this. This was already dealt with by Salt Lake City. And when I was at the rally with my colleague, a city employee from Salt Lake City gave me their city code, and I sent it to our, at that time, our interim city manager. And basically, they had a cultural committee that determined whether that is appropriate art for that culture. Because for them, it might be appropriate, for us, it might not. And, but they have a committee that determines those things by permit. All we had to do is really put it in West Jordan language. It also defined what a mural is and where it can be placed. So I would like to see us send this back to Planning and Zoning, look at what our neighboring city, especially from the city I grew up in, I went to South High, it was diversity. And I respect all cultures that I went to school with. And they are represented in Salt Lake, we should represent them here in West Jordan. So I would just say I agree with one of our planning and zoning that we revisit this with language that's already been developed by a neighboring city. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. As I read this ordinance, I was troubled by a few things. Number one, it doesn't limit the number of walls they can put it on. They can cover the entire building with this mural. It also says walls, so I'm assuming that means the wall around their building could also have a complete mural on it. I think there ought to be a percentage, if we're going to allow these, there ought to be a percentage of coverage, not an entire building covered by a mural. I do agree it shouldn't be political. But, and there are some beautiful murals up in Salt Lake. I do agree with that. But I do feel that we do need to, to have a percentage of coverage so that an entire building is not covered by one mural or the wall around them by one mural. So I would like to see this go back and we look at. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the comments of Commissioner Green. I'm very much in favor of the direction that we're going. I like that we're looking at making some modifications to our code to allow the artistic expression. It's not just a cultural issue, it's, it's an art issue. I do have concerns with some of the verbiage in there. And they were, they were highlighted, actually Commissioner Green did a fantastic job highlighting what some of those issues were in the document provided to us. The ones that jumped out to me were some of the questions about the permits. We require a permit and we require them to give certain information. It gives the indication that things would be approved or denied based on the information that's provided. I don't know that we can do that. In fact, looking at just the recent news, it was July of this year when we had some folks up in Farmington, outside of Lagoon, on public property protesting what was going on there. Charges were brought against them because they didn't apply for the permits with, with the city. And then eventually those charges were dropped when the ACLU came back and said, "You're requiring a permit for free speech in a public driveway. You can't do that." Here, we're looking at that, but on private property. So I have real questions about, about that one. And then also, again, Commissioner Green said it much more clearly and eloquently than myself, but where we get into asking for the content, giving the impression that things would be approved or denied based on content, and that's clearly something that we can't regulate based on. It needs to be something that's more easily, not so open to personal opinions, rather something that's more numerically quantified. So I like the direction that we're going, but I would like to see either a detailed explanation from legal as to why this is justified, and other folks that have done the same and the rationale for it, or get rid of those items that may be problematic. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Rice.
I appreciate very much all the discussion we've been having. Fortunately, I don't see this as a cultural issue, I see it as an art issue, and I really like to promote art in West Jordan. I think it beautifies the city. I think it's important. But it is also very important to make sure we do it right. So I agree we should take it back to planning commission.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second. There are a motion by Councilmember Rice and a second by Councilmember Haga. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Southward.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I don't know what the silver bullet is here, but Commissioner brought up a good point about Portland. I went there, that was a few years ago, and was touring TODs and Parvath with some rail trails. And they had some problems in rail trails. They built a lot of graffiti, and they solved that problem through wall murals. And what they did is they commissioned artists. And the commissioned artists come in and put these, these massive, I mean, some of them are as long as this room here and longer, and this tall, these massive murals or these giant walls, and they solved that. And I think there's a way to do this. And, you know, I don't know if that's, like I said, I don't know if that's a silver bullet there, but there are options out there, ways to do this. But also, you know, you get into tasteful, tasteful is very subjective. There are some standards of decency a community has, and we just, you know, it's, that's a sticky subject. You start getting into that. So I can see, appreciate the caution that was taken, you know, and, but I just don't think we're there yet.
I'm going to speak in favor of the motion as well. I think we're on the right track, but this is a very complex item. And I think we probably need to revisit it and we'll send it back. That's my opinion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Southward?
Aye.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item 7B, received public input and considered for approval ordinance 15-34, approving a rezone and land use map amendment for Maverick Convenience Store located at northeast corner of 7800 South, 1300 West. Future land use map amendment for 1.955 acres from city center neighborhood T S O D Center to neighborhood commercial rezone from P C Planned Community, T S O D Zone to S C One Neighborhood Shopping Center Zone. Better City applicant.
Yes, you all know the corner we're talking about. Under current zoning, this activity would not be allowed. So this is just a public hearing on that.
Yeah, applicant.
Mayor and council, my name is Mallory Brask. I'm from a company called Better City that does some consulting work for Maverick. So Maverick is under contract to purchase the land that's on the northeast corner of 7800 South and 1300 West near the Gardner Village Development. We are proposing the construction of a convenience store and a gas station at this site. Just so you're aware, the current property owner, Joe Long, and his real estate agent are in attendance as well if there's any questions about the historical use of the property. To start off, I'd like to give you a little bit of background information about the business. You're probably familiar with Maverick from their other locations. However, the new store design that's planned for this property is something that we're really proud of. It really doesn't look like your traditional C store, and it has been upgraded and enhanced significantly to provide a high-quality product. The budget for the store has been increased significantly, and our new store format is going to include an outdoor seating area that's complete with picnic tables, trellises, and landscaping to help give our customers an enjoyable experience. We have a new store that's just opened in Kaysville that has a very similar format. The size of the store has also been increased to offer more amenities to our customers. Maverick's corporate goal is to have a balanced business plan between gas and store sales. Maverick is always looking to improve the in-store experience and the availability of products. One of the new features is our expanded Bonfire Grill that's now going to feature a keypad where you can punch in the ingredients that you'd like on your deli sandwich. We've heard rave new views from customers who've purchased the food from the Bonfire Grill. And so really what we're trying to do is create a new, clean, enjoyable atmosphere to enhance our customers' Maverick experience. Our development would provide quality of life to the city's residents. It would give easy access to a convenience store and commodity products, and it increases livability by bringing a walkable, popular store and amenity to the community. As you're probably aware, there's a residential development going on next to the Maverick Convenience Store, so this would just provide a walkable amenity to those residents. So as the staff has mentioned, the site is currently zoned P C Planned Community with a transit station overlay. So the reason we're meeting here tonight is to propose the rezone and remove the transit station overlay. The property is currently vacant, and it has been for quite a few years. The previous use of the property was two single-family dwellings. And, let's see, the staff previously has mentioned in some of their responses that this location has seen interest in establishing uses that are more aligned with retail or commercial uses, rather than transit-oriented developments just because of its location. As mentioned before, the site is on the corner of 7800 South, which is an arterial street, and 1300 West, which is a busy collector's street. The intersection near the development is planned to undergo intersection improvements by widening and adding lanes to alleviate congestion in the area. The current zoning and overlay do not permit a gasoline and service station, as David Oka mentioned. However, the historic zoning of the property used to be S C One, and it used to permit a gas station and convenience store. We're very excited about this location, and we think that a Maverick store would be a great fit for the community and all the adjacent property uses. We look forward to your consideration of the rezone and land use map amendment.
We have a question. Councilmember Haga.
I love Mavericks. So you've mentioned the one up in Davis County, and I think it went off the Jordan Valley Trail, I think it's on Rebel Road and somewhere. But you talked about some amenities, and that's what you have there, where you kind of basically have a little mini park, and you have grilling. Is that what you're talking about here, too?
Yeah, so there's going to be a space near, next to the store that's going to have some picnic tables and trellises, just a place for people to stop and eat their lunch. In the new store format, there's also spaces inside the store. We've got tables and chairs that people can sit to enjoy their lunch.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. You may have said this, and I apologize because while you were chatting, I was looking stuff up and referencing back and forth. So if you say it, I'm sorry for the repetition, but the adjacent property to the east, you have another development. Is there anything in this development that works in concert with that development? There's a community that we have just, originally there were just concept plans, but we talked about potentially like parking lots, adjoining, that you would have traffic flows. Has there been any conversation?
There has been some conversation, but I don't think anything has been decided yet. We're still in the initial stages of.
I know this is a rezone, I was just curious. Thank you.
Councilmember Southward.
Thank you. Just jumping off of those comments from Councilman Nichols, should this be approved and we head in that direction, I would suggest that that's really what we worked towards. This site is part of what was considered TOD. I don't think this use really fits that very well. And that's being generous. Property rights are property rights, and if this is what, what the use is going to be, then we need to work towards making, this is a funny thing to say, I think I've never said this, a Maverick walkable, you know, in connection with these other developments that are out there. I think that serves a business, hopefully would serve a business purpose for Maverick, but also trying, really trying to keep that TOD essence. You know, it's really hard to make a Maverick fit in the TOD, and it's really stretched to do that, but I would suggest that that's the road we end up going down, that that's what we work towards. So take that for what it's worth.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now open the public hearing for item 7B. If you're here to speak on this issue, now would be the time.
I might as well speak on this one since I opposed the Gardner Station for so dang long. Kelvin Green, over on Battlefield Cove. If you recall, just to refresh everybody's memory, the area to the east is, was the project that was proposed by Joe Colosimo that the neighbors successfully fought for a long time. And then as we, as we worked, as the neighbors worked with Mr. Colosimo on the project, this particular site had the arrangement with Mr. Long and his, his consideration to remove that as a high den, you know, put the restrictions on the property so that we didn't have a further high-density property in the neighborhood. So from my perspective, as somebody who fought that, you know, the whole, the whole mess, and then helped broker the deal that my neighbors probably hate, and I'll admit to it, I think that this Maverick's going to be a good fit on the corner. It will help, it will develop that piece of property that we've talked about developing for decades. I, you know, I think that Maverick is going to be a good neighbor. It's going to, I think it's going to fit. You're right, it doesn't fit a T S O D. You know, when we're talking about walkable neighborhoods and we're talking about a gas station, it's kind of an oxymoron. But at the end of the day, I think it fits that development. And, you know, when you, when you talk about almost two acres for a gas station, it's got to be more than just a convenience store and 10 spots. So I think it's going to be a good fit. And from somebody who lives around the corner and will probably stop in there on the way home from work, because I'm not going to cross 13th West to get in there on the way to work, it will be a good fit. And that's why, I think that's why the planning commission recommended approval. And from a, from a neighbor's standpoint, I think it's going to be a good use for that piece of property. And so I would, I would urge you to approve the zoning and land use map changes for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Chad Lamb, 1434 West Highland Hollow Drive. I've lived off of 1300 West for 15 years now, and every year that road gets busier and busier. I'm not opposed to Maverick, I'd rather have a Maverick there than a 20-story apartment building, so that's good. But I do ask the council and find a way to please, look for a way to fix 13th West right there by the old 7-Eleven that's now a car dealership. There needs to be some kind of right turn lane or something there that alleviates traffic as people are heading south, either whether, heading south 13th or turning there in 7800 South. So my biggest gripe as a citizen is if we can find some way, and I've talked to a few people within West Jordan and people that I know that work with the city, and they say that right now there's no plans to fix that intersection. So if we're going to put in a Maverick, which would be really nice for us to live there, let's at least look at fixing that intersection as well so that we can have better traffic flow through that area. Thank you.
Councilmember Southward.
Mayor, a quick comment to Chad and the other neighbors that are here. Previously in our consent items, we did approve consent item F, which is authorizing and agreement with Standing Consultants, Inc., to complete environmental clearance for road widening at this intersection, as well as some others. So although that doesn't take care of the whole road, but at least the intersection, we're taking the first steps to go down that road. No pun intended.
Just to add to that, WSSAC from Regional Council has approved $9 million for the widening of 13th through three of the cities. That's not quite enough to get it done yet, but that's still a substantial amount. So it's on the horizon.
Spectacular news.
Please.
Jaylen Thomas, 1348 West Barton Hollow Drive. And I do have the concern about the traffic, and I don't know what the timeline for the road being taken care of, but if it could be done around the same time that they would start construction, then we would all be inconvenienced once. And I do like the idea that we're going to have that there. Because as you guys have indicated, you can't tell a property owner what they can and cannot do with their property and you can't control, you can't put in place something that a future council cannot change. So I'm saying get that gas station in there right away because I don't want it to change after the new year and then it goes to high density because you can't hold the other council. But my other concern, and I'm, I hope you guys are aware of the history over there, but on that corner, it was a militia drill field. It was also the tithing corral. I believe the road is currently where the tithing house would have been, so that's kind of a moot point. But I don't know what federal requirements are to put in a gas station or that type of facility. I mean, if there's federal issues that go into place that triggers Section 106, which is the U.S. Historic Preservation Act. But if there's no federal fingers in there, I would like to see that the property owner or the developer for the Maverick at least consider having the Utah Historic Preservation Office or the Daughters or Sons of the Utah Pioneers kind of excavate that corner, see if there's anything of significant, you know, Mormon artifacts underneath the ground. Similar to when Gardner Village was getting renovated back in 1985. In your West Jordan history book, it was called the Button Discovery. And if it wasn't for this gentleman, Kim Lundquist, coming in and asking Mrs. Long if he could scan the area before they started the road, they would, they would have never discovered metal buttons back from probably the Civil War, bone buttons, wood buttons. So I would, I know that's probably something you can't direct, but it is something that I would like to see so we can at least preserve some of our Mormon pioneer heritage. And the other thing I request from Maverick is they need to bring back their French bread because I'm really upset that that's gone. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will return to the council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Nichols.
I have a motion. If there's no comment, I do.
One comment first. Councilmember Hagan.
This is, there's been a lot of controversy here, but you know, one thing about Maverick is, as a comment, I like this zoning. Maverick, I think, would be a great partner. I mean, they're just a company that works with West Valley, have an inherent right to the Maverick center, which used to be something else. I think that, I think with our talented staff, and I agree with some of the residents, this is a historic area and maybe they become aware of our history here. And, but I'm a proponent of this.
Oops, I'm a proponent of this. You didn't hear any of that, sorry. But I'm a proponent of this rezone. Thanks, Mayor. Now, Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say a funny comment, but it's not that funny anymore. But Kelvin, with Kelvin's voting, or if he's giving a praise on something, you definitely gotta follow suit. I appreciate Kelvin's words today and the other words that are shared by others. I value those very much. It's great to see the community's support for this type of rezone. And with that, I move that we approve ordinance number 15-34, amending the future land use map and the zoning for the package.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember McConney. Discussion. Councilmember Hagan.
Since you didn't hear me last time, sorry, I do have the opportunity to speak. Again, I'm a proponent of the motion, rezoning. I would just ask in the hearing here that the Maverick folks, if they do purchase the property, consider our history. It's, it's very, very deep. Unless you understand the history of West Jordan, people always ask me, what's the difference between West Jordan and South Jordan? That's where all the pioneers crossed the river. That was a hub, that was a security area. So look at our history and maybe preserve it. I think Maverick will. Thanks.
Councilmember McConney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to underscore the comments made by Ms. Thomas. And right now, even though we're just doing the rezone, I would encourage the developers, they start making progress, to be sure to be cautious of any historical artifacts that might be, that might get covered so that we can properly preserve and memorialize that. That's all. Thank you.
Here. That's all.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember McConney.
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Item 7C, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance 15-35, approving a rezone for Pinnacle Cove located at 8890 South, 1030 West. Rezone 3.46 acres from R110E, single-family residential, 10,000 square foot lots to PRD, 3.77 planned residential development with 3.77 units per acre density, H&amp;H Development Group LLC applicant. David Oka.
Yes, staff is here to address this, this issue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Vischerelli's property is located just off the 1030 West, probably a quarter mile from 90th South, back in what used to be a large dairy farm and farms years ago was developed. But these properties have gone undeveloped for a number of years. Mr. Vischerelli's trying to sell off his portion of his, what is remaining of there for the Vischerelli family farm. However, this property's got some unusual constraints. As you can see, right up in here is a fairly flat, a flat piece of property and then it drops off quite significantly as it goes into the Jordan River Valley. The property was zoned from A5 to R110 probably two years ago in a larger application that would have taken both of these sites. Luella Thompson's property and Tom Vischerelli's, however, that project never materialized largely because of the constraints of the hillside. The applicant at this time is proposing to rezone the three and a half acres approximately from R110 to a planned residential development. And the advantage is that the planned residential development zone does give, is it gives the opportunity to cluster the homes, and I might add, these homes are all single-family, all single-family dwellings. However, they would be clustered in a conceptual pattern similar to what is here. Now, the concept plan that's been submitted generally lays out where the roads can be and the use of the property. What it does do is also, the PRD zones, allows the ability to cluster the homes so they can take advantage of the full site and the density will be based upon the full site. And it preserves this rather steep hillside from any marine or any type of development that could not only render it more unstable or unstable, but it also protects, you know, protects the applicant because they have to comply with the city's hillside ordinance, which does not allow development on slopes of greater than 30%. So this extreme slope will remain undeveloped. The conceptual density, and I apologize, Mayor, in your reading of the introduction, the actual density is now 3.46 units per acre. The applicant listened to the concern, some of the concerns of the neighborhood at the Planning Commission meeting is reduced. The home count or conceptual home count from 13 to 12 homes has put in some off-street parking conceptually and a place for trash collection. That was many of the concerns at the meeting. I realize that this is a zone change, but you also, if you approve this, we'll be approving the concept plan. So those things are important, at least the applicant is listening to the Planning Commission and the community. The interesting fact is the conceptual density of the PRD zone is 3.46 units and with the R110 zoning, if they were to maximize all of the property is, is almost exactly the same. And this zone change does meet the intent of the medium-density feature land use map of 3.1 to 5 units per acre. That is really, you know, a lot of the design issues that will probably be talked about tonight, if this is approved, will all come up with the subdivision process, the preliminary subdivision process. That means the development of the road right here, the, all of the utilities, the utility relocation, stormwater, sewer, all that garbage collection will all be taken care of at the preliminary subdivision if this does happen to get approved. I might add that staff is recommending approval of this and feels that it meets all of the criteria of the ordinance. However, the Planning Commission has sent forward a negative recommendation to this zone change request. I might add that the applicant is here if you want to talk to him about, or have him talk to you about any of the items of his application. Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yeah, I used to live in this, this is my second home in West Jordan, in this neighborhood, this west. But the first question I have, I think we've dealt with this before in a different situation, but what about fire? I mean, that's a tough area. That would be maybe to the chief. If we develop that that way, are we gonna be able to get our engines around there? Have you looked at that?
We haven't looked at that yet. That would come in the next phase.
Okay.
And then I might add, that also came up at the Planning Commission and this development would have to meet fire code. I mean, we would not make any special exceptions. If there was too many home count on the development, then whatever homes that exceeded that home count would be required to be sprinkled. So we would no way in any fashion deviate from any of the city's standards, ordinance, or safety requirements.
And then just the other question, Larry, and I don't know if you know this, but is water table. I mean, this is, you know, an area I know from our house. We had a half basement and a lot of the neighbors didn't and they had, had to pump, pump, pump. So are we gonna restrict the depth of the homes as far as their foundations and that?
I think that would be based upon how their soils report and their geotech study will come back. And that again, would be a subdivision process.
Councilmember McConney.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go back to the slide that showed the road right there? What are the widths on those?
Are the applicant, I believe they've got this out. As you can see here, it's a 19-foot. But however, I might add that we would require that to be expanded to 50 feet.
Okay. And what about that private drive?
The minimum private drive I know of, per our standards, is 40 feet. And we have not, we've told every applicant that's come in here for a pre-op that our full intent is to make that a public street, the full width of a public street.
And then what's the setback from the road?
The setback should be, since if the PRD was approved, that would be established by the Planning Commission through the development plan process. This conceptual plan, you know, it's, it's really, what you can do is with these things is really get mired in the weeds with them. But believe me, when the subdivision process comes, we would look very hard at all those things to make sure that it fits the neighborhood. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. We will now open the public hearing portion of item 7C and we have several signed up to speak. First, Mary Cusel wanted her statement read into the record against the proposed development. Mary, would you like to speak? I'm just gonna paraphrase a little bit of it. The main concern is the density, the total property acreage is 3.456. Of that approximately 1.5 acres of our property is greater than 30% slope. Should be discounted from the 3.456 acres. Sorry, did nothing, Mary. Thank you. Randy McDougall.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to also make sure that you all got a copy of a letter that I sent in today. I see a couple saying yes, a couple saying no. I'm just gonna go over a couple of the highlights from that. My big concern tonight is, I know we're talking about this as a rezone and that there's a tendency to say, well, we'll take care of the details later. The concern is this land, the details have to go hand in hand with the rezone request. We're talking about whether or not this land can handle the intense, the higher intense use of putting 12 more units on it. In my letter, I talk about, this is an old country lane. It dates back into the mid-1800s. Underneath the road, there is an irrigation ditch that's an active irrigation ditch, covered over with some concrete tiles to keep the road out. When you start putting things like garbage trucks, moving trucks, fire trucks, anything like that down the road, it's going to crush. Now, the question comes in, who's gonna pay for that? Well, under the current plan, it's the HOA that owns the private lane, so the HOA pays for it. Keep in mind, these are going to be people who, because of the way that the homes are designed, these are going to be people who are beginning life. They won't have the money for it. They're gonna be back here in the city council saying, we have an emergency, we need you to come in and bell us out. So keep in mind that that's going to be coming down the road if this is not taken care of appropriately. Right now, as we bring our vehicles down the road, the lane is so tight, and I'm glad to hear that the city is wanting to widen that. I'd like to make sure that stays the purpose, you know, stays the intent of the city. Right now, we have to have people out of the cars and watching both sites to make sure you don't hit anything going down that 19-foot road, the 19-foot wide road. The developer is talking, I think he's playing a little game with the numbers and I think it's important to understand. He's talking about this being a three and a half acre piece of land and I'm gonna put 12 houses on there and these are gonna be great lots, 10,000 square feet or so, a lot. Don't get confused by this. It's one, it's two and a half acres with the 12 homes. Now, in the Planning Commission meeting, he was, we were asking, well, how much spaces are between each home, conceptually speaking? And he said, six to eight feet. There was a joke about if you need ketchup, you can just knock on the window next door and pass the ketchup. This is six to eight feet, two-story homes, you're not gonna have any grass growing, it's gonna be garbage collection, it's gonna be an eyesore. Now, in the staff's report, they talk about the intent of a, of a PRD. And I, I noticed it was a little bit interesting, if you looked at page three and four of your reports, they talk about the, this zoning, one of the purposes is to encourage creative design. The staff's answer is because we clustered the houses together and that's imaginative. Supposed to encourage social and community interaction. The staff's answer, well, it doesn't have a gate. Supposed to have a distinctive visual character and identity. They said, well, it's different than the other homes. It's supposed to have a mixture of public and private facilities. And they said, well, we're gonna put in a wider road. These are not reasons to go with a PRD to allow for this. That open space that they're talking about is a very severe slope. It's not something that's even gonna be used. The kids are gonna be playing in the road, you have a safety concern. I know my time. my time's up. I have many more things to talk about. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Dober?
Honorable Mayor Rolfe, and members of the council, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. As one of the neighbors in this neighborhood, living at 8927 South, 1050 West, our neighbors are very desirous that this piece of property be developed. It's kind of an eyesore at the present time. Obviously, it's a, it's a beautiful piece of property that has a view out across the valley, and should be developed. However, our concern is the same that we expressed during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and that is that the conceptual development plan, that for a PRD is integral to the, to the approval process, is not complete, and furthermore, doesn't meet most of the requirements that we would expect for a planned residential development. If you look at the conceptual design as it appears here on the board, you'll note that the small spaces between houses is, is very evident in the road that sits across the, the western road that's to be widened. This may not be to scale, but you can note from looking at that, that those are very, very small spaces. As I've gone back and looked at the, the developer who's requesting this planning and zoning, they built beautiful homes, but none of them are spaced like this, none of them. Now, in also going to their website, I'm a little bit concerned that their marketing plan, which is contained on their website, differs substantially from the conceptual plan that was presented to the zoning commission, as well as what's before you tonight. And so, with that in mind, I would, I would recommend that you follow the council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that this not be approved. Again, the neighbors want this piece of property developed, but it needs to be done in a way that's in accordance with the, the process of a planned residential development, or a residential development. So, I would ask that you take that into careful consideration as you consider approving. Thank you.
Thank you. Carleen Logan?
I am, I'm Carleen Logan. I live on the land that's on this side. It's an acre. I was looking at other planned residential developments, and the closest ones I could find, there's, there's something similar to it behind Stock Building, which is, you know, on 13th West and 90th South. It has about 20 acres. There's 201 houses there. Now, the, it's not a planned residential development. They're all single houses. That's 201 on 20 acres. So, it's a large piece of land that's developed in this way. The problem with this is that it's a tiny piece of land situated in the middle of houses that are much more spaciously spaced. Then, the closest planned residential development I could find is down there by the temple, Reunion Community, I think is what it is. And it has 176 homes that are pretty big, and it looks like it's on about 25 acres. When you have that many homes, you can actually control what's going on. You end up with a fee-based, where they take care of things. There's no way that 12 houses are going to be take, be able to take care of this properly like a planned residential development is. So, this is high-density houses in the midst of a whole bunch of nicely-spaced houses. Just over the corner of that, where it says river, there's houses up there that have like a quarter acre for their houses. I have an acre. The houses across from it each have a quarter to a third of an acre. And then you're sticking this really high-density thing in the middle. There's nothing like it anywhere close. The next small, the next place I could find was Sunrise Place. That's about 7655 South Redwood, and it has 56 houses, and they are not as close as this. And it has quite a bit, quite a few more acres. Just to give you an idea of how close those houses are together, I have six-foot wingspan. I would be able to touch both houses. That just doesn't make any sense when nothing else around it is similar. So, I implore you to please nix the, the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Williams?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Williams. I live at 8848 South, 1030 West. The proposed subdivision has changed from 13 home, 18 homes, 13 homes, 12 homes. Firstly, they proposed that 13 homes are, would be built on 1.75 acres. They also proposed retaining walls for 18 homes on 3.5 acres. Regardless of the proposals, they're attempting to put homes on less than one-quarter acre or 10,000 square foot lots. The lots I've seen are somewhere in size closer resembling one-eighth acre or R16 lots. Hence, the need to rezone to a PRD. They couldn't build the proposed homes on existing zoning, and they don't dare ask for R16. According to the Planning and Zoning Commission's concerns, they have not addressed many things, including the rear yard setback, aging infrastructure, or Kelvin, Kelvin Green specific issues, including criteria number two, criteria number three, criteria number four, and also criteria number nine. And also, there was a question of whether it's actually legal or authorized to rezone to a PRD on such a small piece of property. If any of these plans, I have yet to see a minimum of a 29-foot residential street, or having sidewalks on the other side of the street, our side of the street. I don't see anything there. Currently, they have, like everyone's been saying, six feet between them. Now, that's proposed, the proposal changes our private lane, low-density, quiet lane, into high-density residential street. It also subjects existing homeowners to dealing with an HOA without being members of it. I would instead propose two alternatives. One, just subdivide the property into one-quarter acre lots, sell them to homeowners that want to purchase a home, and the developer can then build their custom homes on one-quarter acre lots. That would make more sense. Or, if you really want to make a high-density community, which I'm not saying, don't, don't go for it, if you want to, then rezone the entire street of 1030 West to R16 or one-eighth acre lots, allowing everyone along that street to thus create additional homes. I live on a half acre. How many homes can I stick on my piece of property? I don't know. But, I'm just saying, it sounds ridiculous, but hey, if you're going to do it right, do it the right way. Again, I'd just like to say, there's, there's aging infrastructure that has not been dealt with, including four poles on my property alone. I strongly advise, once again, that you go against this. Go with the planning commission's advisement to vote no on this, and, you know, either let them address their concerns with the property owners, so we don't have to deal with an HOA. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all who have signed up for item 7C to speak. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
I might as well, I might just sit in here. Kelvin Green in Battlefield Cove again. As you've seen from your minutes, we recommended disapproval for this project. The main reason, we're taking a round peg and putting it into a small square hole. The PRD, when you look at the, what the requirements of what a PRD is for, this doesn't work for a PRD. PRD's normally a large-scale development, that you can do lots of things with a consistent theme. This is 13, 12 or 13 custom-built homes that, that just doesn't meet the, the intent of a PRD. After, but let me just share you, share some insights, and this may help the council. After the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we talked, we, most of us agreed that this is not a PRD. What we talked about is, maybe what the city needs is an infill zoning ordinance, that we can come up with some appropriate ways to infill in properties like this, but not have, not use a PRD that doesn't work. The staff has a proposed infill ordinance. I, I know that as we, as we talked with Mr. Oka and some of the email traffic, we had, we talked about an infill ordinance, and it was, it was solely residential, and I think there's some concern that we need a, a commercial infill ordinance and a, and a commercial infill overlay. I think if this, this council rejects this, gives the, gives the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple of three, four months, we can come back with an infill overlay ordinance, that a project like this will work, that will actually meet the needs of the city, but won't necessarily put that, that round, you know, that square peg in the round hole, or the round peg in the square hole, forcing something to be a PRD that's really not a PRD. It's just inconsistent to, to do that, and we think that an infill ordinance is just the better way to do that. And I think at the end of the day, if we delay this, and we get a good infill ordinance together, we're, we're going to have a better project on this property. I, I can tell you that I have historic ties to this. When I was a kid, I was throwing hay on the Biscerelli Farm with some of the kids. I understand some of this, I, I understand the, the nature of this property. It is, it's got a great view. The neighbors want it developed. I think we need it developed in the right way, and the PRD wasn't it, and that's why we rejected it. And we, I would ask the same thing, and give us an opportunity to fix the, with the infill, and come back with something, so we have a good project for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Zach Jacob, 7654 Yellow with name. As a matter of course, I don't normally sit up and speak on something that the planning commission heard, because I kind of had my chance to talk about it. However, I had to leave this meeting early when this was discussed, so I didn't quite get my two cents in. Only I got one cent in, so, here's the other pin. I, I would also speak against the, the proposed rezone, mainly because when you're rezoning something from a larger lot down to where you're clustering, or you're making a smaller lot, or something along those lines, what you're saying is, you would have had open space in your front yard, your backyard. Well, since it doesn't really fit here, we're going to combine all the open space into one place, and combine all the houses into one place. And, conceptually, that, that can work sometimes. We've done things in the past where we've downzoned from an R110 to an R16, providing that they'll put in a nice big park, that we can all share, right? So, you individually have to take care of less open space, but we collectively, then, will take care of this nice big thing that everybody can enjoy. So, it's a trade-off. This, however, doesn't fit that, because this open space is not usable. You can't make a park out of that slope, unless you regrade the whole slope. And if you're going to regrade the whole slope, let's leave it at 10,000 square foot lots, build the 13 homes on the whole three acres, instead of a, a little less than half of it. So, that's just, conceptually, my thoughts on that, the way that, that rezoning is, is supposed to work in my mind. I live in a planned residential development. I like it. It's fine. I don't have a yard. That's okay. I have a swimming pool and a clubhouse, and some other things that are kind of nice. So, it, it's, again, it's a trade-off, but the trade-off doesn't exist here. Here, you're just getting houses, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Vaughn Biscerelli. I live on the end, on 90th, 1030 West, 8987 South. Where are you going to put the two roads? Supposed to have one in and one out. And you're supposed to have a sewer line running in and out. And the drain water, what are you going to do with that, coming off the hill? Run in the canal? Kenny caught, own that canal. Kenny caught, might said, shut it off. What are you guys going to do with all that water coming off the hill from stuff? Put it down in the river, or what? And, like I say, that's Tommy Place, and I know all about that ground. And that one side there, where the hill is, he's got a bunch of trees and everything in there. He haul a bunch of trees in there and bury them on that one side by, on the north end. I know all about that ground, and I've farmed that all my life, until they kicked me out of there. So, I thought they have, have a road goes in and one coming out. As to what last time the meeting was, here, year ago. So, it's got, have two roads in, one out, and for the fire trucks and everything. Them houses there is really small. In there, you get a bunch of houses like that, and fires go up. He'll take the whole bunch of houses all the way to, through the 78th, the windstorm. You guys be in big trouble when all that happened. So, up to you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing of item 7C. Oh, sorry. Please come forward.
All right. We're the developers. Should we talk now or after the public hearing?
What was that?
We're the developers. Should we talk now or after the public hearing?
Oh, you can speak now.
Is that okay? Okay.
Hi, I'm Tim Alders. I'm born and raised in West Jordan, graduated from high school here. I still try to find time to come back and emcee parades and stuff here. I respect what people are saying on the landowners. I also respect your staff and want to commend them on our, being able to work with them on trying to get a fix, to fix something that's filled with skunks and snakes, as Tommy's sister says, and she lives there. We're not, we, we build communities. I, I appreciate the gentleman that said he's seen our houses. We build beautiful houses. We have built projects like this, multiple times. I've been building for 21 years. We have one going up on the ranches that have similar things to what this is. Little pods of eight units, with six-to-eight foot alleys that are landscaped, firewalld, everything else. So, we would have to meet code. And fixing the road and widening the road, we've tried to address all the issues that come up at planning commission, to try and make this a win-win, both for the landowner who's trying to sell us the land, and the community, and for us. You know, it is, comes down to business. What can you develop on a small piece of property, pay what the property owner wants for land, and be able to develop it with all the improvements needed there, and make it affordable? The homes that we're building there aren't high-density homes. They are top-end 300s to low 400,000s, which is an improvement on a lot of the areas in West Jordan. It, it has a good value. It's not going to be detrimental. And I'm going to let my partner tell you some of the things we did, based on what the community wanted already, and that we're willing to work with staff, and if it's not going to work, we'd walk away.
Well, we, we appreciate your time. We've been working on this project for about six months. We've already gone through about five revisions, so we're completely flexible. We do, I've met with the neighbors a couple times. We've worked with staff. We've gone to planning commission. We're open. We do want to work with everyone and partner and create a great development. With planning commission, there were some specific concerns, and I agree with some of them. And so, what we've tried to do in the meantime is redesign our conceptual site plan to address a lot of the concerns that some of the neighbors and planning commission have said. And if you have a second, I just wanted to go through some of those. All right, two minutes. I'll go fast. The first one is that the private lane is narrow. I agree. The private lane's 19 feet. It really is challenging, especially that they put their garbage cans just in the middle, and there's no place for parking. So, parking, they park all along the road. So, we, what we propose is, we'll obviously redo the road, bring it up to city standards, make it so it's not a burden for the HOA, because we're going to redo all the improvements at the developer's cost, not the HOA's cost. With the, with the road, we've also included guest parking. We'll do as much guest parking as, we do not want people on those roads. We want it free and clear. So, we're open to some direction on how much guest parking you would like. The other part is, with trash, everyone talks about how the trash situation is pretty, pretty bad. All the neighbors have to bring it down to the corner. And so, what we propose is, we'll do a designated trash area. And it's not just for our community. We'll even allow all the neighbors to use that same area, so a garbage truck can come in, gather all the trash right there, turn around, and be out of there without affecting anybody. And so, we're open to allowing them to use that dedicated trash area as well. As far as fire truck access, we'll design As far as fire truck access, we'll design something. We met with DRC, fire department didn't have a problem with it. We will comply with everything that they want. On the side yards, you know, they are, we're open to some direction on your end as far as what you'd like for setbacks for side yards. This is just a proposal. What I tried to do was make the side yards a little bit bigger in certain areas so we could create some walking paths to get back to that area. Now, I agree that a lot of the space is unusable because of the slope, but you can still see that there's a huge area that is flat, and we do plan on adding a barbecue area, adding a totlock, adding grass. We're open to allowing the neighbors to use that, as well as our citizens. We want to make it a nice area, usable area for everyone else. Though the other, the other one we had didn't have as, quite as much usable space in the flat area, so we removed one of the units, redesigned it so that we could have some usable space as far as the, as far as the open area. Okay, 15 seconds, sorry. As far as the slope's concerned, we'll get a geotech report. We've tried to situate the units as far away from the slope as possible, we'll comply with their request. But, you know, in general, I'll just end by saying that we are open, you know, we're flexible, we want to work with the city, we want to work with neighbors, we're open to direction, but we're already six months into it. I don't know if we have another six months to redesign the code.
Little question, council member.
Sure.
So I, you believe this side, I remember distinctly, and I remember the McDougal, this used to be the McDougal homestead, you know, and, but, you know, I'm, I wanted, I saw a canal, you mentioned the canal, that's my first question. Does the canal, is it, it's not part of the North or the South Jordan Canal, it's basically just a contributory to one of the farms? The pipe that goes down that road?
It's the North Jordan Canal, it's at the bottom of this property, below the bottom of this.
But this road that you're proposing, I see a canal, you know, bow there. Are we going to eliminate all that? Are you prepared to go to those costs?
Yeah, we're open to work with the city to, you know, do the improvements we need to do, so.
And then, just one comment, you know, I always, my children just bought a, my number three daughter bought a home just like this, where there, there's not more than probably eight feet between their homes, and what they did was put new types of shrubbery in there. But are we going to have backyards? That would be my question on this. Because I, you say there's going to be open space, but are the homeowners that buy the have backyards, or are they just going to be?
We're open to suggestions on that. It could be that people just own the building envelope and the rest of the space is open to the HOA, or we could, we're open to plan it where people could have backyards as well, so.
Different cities have asked us for different types of things, and one of the areas we're at, they just wanted the building envelope and everybody moving in there just shares the open space, the park. Others have asked us for little, at least six-foot parks, so that comes up, you know, we're not presenting a subdivision here, we're, we're just trying to see if it's feasible to move forward and try and develop a piece of property.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please?
My name's Rick Logan, and I'm Herb Slay. Anyway, I live on that one acre. I remember when this came up two years ago, I think it's Subwich Development that owns another acre right to the east of this. You go down the hill, and then there's that acre, and then there's that Kennicott Canal. And I remember a fellow showing up here saying that he was interested in selling his land down below. Mr. Vischerelli talked about two entrances. If they really could put this together, why can't they space it out? And if you need another road, why can't we involve the land below that the guy would like to sell? There is an exit down that goes in front of the Utah Power and on the 90th. I think there's a lot of other possibilities where we could end up with something that I would be happy with, because I don't, I think this kind of drops property value for me, having one acre and that. I think the kids are going to be over in my orchard when I irrigate and have a lake over there, and I'm going to have kids over there, I'm going to have to lock my fence, because it just, anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Todd Watson. I am the Realtor representing Tommy Vischerelli. He is unfortunate here tonight, he is in, moved down to Arizona, he's not able to travel. We have been working this property, not only with this developer, but with other developers for approximately the last four years. And unfortunately, we have been trying to be as respectful as we can to the neighbors, but it seems as though anything that we do, they completely reject. And I can completely understand where they may be coming from, because as a homeowner, I would be a little concerned about some, any kind of development going on in my neighborhood. However, as a Realtor, these properties should raise the values of everybody's property around it. Also, the price in which these are being sold for are not your first-time home buyers. These are not people who are going to be in their twenties, they'll be people who are older, like my age, and possibly professionals. So the development of this, having professionals move in, they talk as though there's going to be a schoolload of children here. I really doubt that. I really believe that there's probably going to be grandchildren that visit on occasion, or maybe older children who are going to be leaving the nest soon. But I do know that Tommy Vischerelli has been very frustrated with this, as I'm sure we can all understand. And he has told me, he says, that if this doesn't work out for him, he's just going to fence it and grow hogs. Now, I don't know Tommy Vischerelli that well, I don't know if he'd be that vindictive to do that, but we really need to come to a resolve on this as soon as possible. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing of item 7C, and return to the council for comment and/or motion. Councilmember Haga.
Yeah, you know, this looked like a tough property to develop, and, you know, I, so without, you know, I would have to trust and have confidence in our staff. We're talking about rezoning really right now. I would have to have trust and confidence in our staff, they're experts, that they can make work with these developers and make this property work. So I'm going to be a proponent of this motion. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Southworth.
I'm prepared to make a motion if there are further comments.
I had a comment. I believe this hillside is probably some of the best real estate, similar to the west bench of our city. The view from this hillside is just like the opposite side of 90th at the River Oaks subdivision, where there are half million to close to $1 million homes because of the view. I think it would be, it's easy for the landowner or a developer to subdivide this into 10,000 square foot lots with E-size home right now, and I think it would be the wrong thing to do to change the zoning. Now, councilmember South.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the comments presented tonight by the council and the public, the negative recommendation from our Planning Commission, and even our own, our own general plan in specifically Goal Three of the residential section, talking about managing growth that occurs within the city, and Policy Two, Two talks about infill developments being similar to adjacent residential developments. Furthermore, in respect to the health, safety, and welfare of the public and the safety concerns that are brought up here, I would move that we deny Org. 15-35.
Second. We have a motion by councilmember Southworth, and a second by councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. I want to applaud the developer for making the effort in the area of the single-family homes. I think that's an important aspect of our city that we are focused on, and I want to applaud them in trying to move in that direction rather than the easy cop-out of townhomes or something else in an area like this. I would, there was a couple of statements on either side of the property value, and I would fall in the stance of, in the price range we were talking, I would actually think that looking at appraisals, property values would go up with this plan. But that being said, I agree with what councilman Southworth has said, and I also agree with what the mayor said. The views, I was at a, just briefly, I was at a function where there's a bunch of managers from my full-time job, and we were all there at a house in South Jordan, and their lot was almost precisely like this, in South Jordan, overlooking the valley, and their lot included the slope all the way to the bottom. And they had a beautiful recessed three-level tier in their yard, pathways and everything else all the way down. And I, I basically just want to echo what the mayor said, and that I would be in favor of this motion.
See. Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you. I made the motion, I'd like to comment if that's okay. The motion has nothing to do with whether I think, you know, we could build a different kind of house or what have you. It is really based on what is found within our general plan and following the guidelines there, and, you know, the need to discuss this based on current city ordinance and policy. I think that was brought up earlier, that, well, we ought to have some kind of infill policy, that's irrelevant, because these gentlemen brought this based on what we have on the books now, and that's what my intent for the denial is, not based on where I think it should be or where we should go, but what we have right now, and I don't think it fits what we have in place. And so I just wanted to give that clarification. That's what this denial is based on. Thank you.
Councilmember Haga.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm going to oppose the motion. I probably would make a substitute, but probably won't go there. But, you know, I, because I lived there, this was my neighborhood, I'd like to see homes there finally. I've walked up that grade, I've ridden a bike up that grade. There's, I don't even, a mayor probably can tell you what a horse could do, but that's a tough property. Yeah, there's a view, there's a view of Rocky Mountain, Power Substation, probably the biggest one on 90th South, and there's a view, hopefully someday, of our nature that we plan to develop. So there's going to be a view, but I, I don't know what we could build there other than what's being proposed, if they're willing to invest that kind of money in the property. So I'd be opposed to the denial, because we have somebody that wants to step up and put rooftops in our homes, we should try to support them. Thanks, Mayor.
Let's vote. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Councilmember Rice.
Just want to add, the comments I agree with, councilmember Southworth, Nichols, and Mayor Ross, and with the comments from the Planning Commission as well. I appreciate the attempted infill. I have some of those same concerns, though, and I will be voting for the mayor.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Haga.
No.
Mayor Ross.
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth.
Aye.
Councilmember Rice.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Vote pass the sixth one in paper.
Councilmember Nichols.
I was just going to move for a recess.
I was going to do the same.
So we have a motion, councilmember Nichols, a second, councilmember Haga. All in paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Was it because games started?
Five-minute recess, only five minutes, please.
Thank you, I'm so glad that you stopped up. I read, you know, you don't think that it reads what you guys talk about, like.
I got a question for you.
I was just having fun.
It's extra comments. No, you're.
I'm stunned. Three things that I actually thought were both in the hall of the city. Okay, I'm just going to go to the county council and get rid of most of them. We appreciate your support, but thanks. Councilmember Lapp, for a time, I got to congratulate. I'm going to go.
Yeah, he's going with it, so he should, he's got.
I got over to. I got. 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 Now, do the price. 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 I think Melanie might have turned it down. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, what we have before you this evening is an update of the master plan for drinking water, the drinking water system. The last time that, uh, it was updated was in two thousand and seven. And, uh, over the last year or so, we've been working on, uh, an update to that master plan. The council approved a, a professional services agreement with Hanson Allen Luce and they've been working on the master plan to complete it. Uh, we presented this, uh, to the council in October of this year and indicated at that time that we would be going to the public in an open house. We completed that on November twelfth and, uh, received comments and we're now back to present it to you in final form as well as receive, present it to the, to the public to receive final comments. So I'd like to turn over the time to Marv Allen, who is, uh, who works for Hanson Allen Luce and, uh, give him time to make a short presentation on the final master plan.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor and the council, we appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation. I was asked to keep it short, so I've summarized this document in five slides, so I hope that works. Um, we've, we've really appreciated the opportunity of working with your city staff. They've been great to work with, I want to commend them. Um, they've been very responsive to providing data and information that we needed in order to complete the update to this drinking water master plan. Master plan process or, or the master plan itself addresses these seven different areas. We identify growth projections anticipated within the city. Um, we take a look at both existing conditions within the drinking water system as well as taking a look at build-out, considering future growth within the city. And then we take a look at, um, all of these other different areas. We take a look at drinking water source, both, uh, to meet existing demands as well as to meet future build-out demands. We take a look at the water system, storage, also the distribution system, its capability of conveying water from the sources and from the tanks to meeting the demands within the city. We also take a, a very hard look at optimizing that system. And as we look at optimization, I know Steve Jones made a presentation here, uh, I think a couple of months ago, but we, we take a look at how to optimize, um, energy efficiency along with system, uh, operation and along with water quality. It's easy to get some of those things out of balance a little bit, you can take a look at, um, simply system performance at times and it can result in energy inefficiencies and which is, of course, costs you more money as a city. We also address water quality. Um, you, the city asked us to include a SCADA system master plan, which, uh, Hegerhorst Power Engineering prepared for us and is included in, as a chapter within our drinking water system master plan. And then, of course, we developed capital, uh, capital improvement plan, improvements plan to identify, um, the cost of the different facilities that we had identified. This figure just provides a quick overview of, uh, basically what we found within the city as we evaluated your system for both existing, um, conditions as well as future. It identifies, for example, um, existing storage reservoirs are identified in blue and future storage reservoirs are in red. It identifies existing sources such as wells, also that your current sources from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District where a substantial part of your water supply is derived. Um, we also identify pipeline projects. You've got a number of, um, asbestos cement pipes that still need to be replaced within the city. We also identify other distribution system pipelines that need to be, um, updated or increased in capacity in order to be able to meet future demands as well as any existing deficiencies that we found in the system. And then there are also, uh, fire flow type projects. We run fire flow analyses throughout the entire city to identify where you may have some fire flow deficiency in meeting the state criteria that you have to impose a fire flow on top of a peak day water demand and have a residual pressure of at least twenty PSI. One thing that, uh, just from a system optimization that I just wanted to mention quickly, uh, one thing that we identified and have recommended with this master plan that, uh, it may be a little bit different direction than, than you were proceeding on in the past. In the past, you were looking at, uh, the city was looking at, at creating combined storage for your pressure zones five and six, all up in the upper end of pressure zone six. Um, as we took a look at that and identified that you would be pumping then water all the way up to a higher pressure zone, only to allow it to flow back down through pressure reducing valves and dissipate that energy, uh, that was, was it an area where, um, you're wasting energy or could be wasting energy as a city? So we did kind of a detailed analysis on, on potential savings in creating separate pressure or separate storage for pressure zone five, separate from your pressure zone six storage. We determined that in, in following that process, that, that in the peak month, uh, of the year, you would save about thirty-eight thousand dollars alone in, in energy costs. And so I've made that recommendation. It also, um, helps with distribution piping. Instead of creating larger diameter pipes through pressure zone six to have to, to flow from that tank all the way down to pressure zone five to meet both demands from the two separate pressure zones, you can downsize the pipe for pressure zone six to only meet the demands of pressure zone six itself. In the end, uh, we developed the capital facilities plan and I've ident, have identified, um, costs associated with that capital facilities plan. We identify total source costs, meeting future needs, storage costs, um, cost for replacement of the asbestos cement pipe. There are a number of projects, not too many, but a number of them scattered throughout the city where you have some fire flow deficiencies that you need to upgrade some pipes in order to, to create the required fire flow. There are some other distribution system projects. The SCADA system, uh, we've estimated would cost on the order of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to upgrade the SCADA system. The bottom line is that the total estimated cost would be about a hundred and seventeen million dollars. Uh, the good thing is that as you look at that, about nearly seventy percent of that cost is related to future growth, so it would be, uh, impact fee eligible. So substantial part of that can be paid with impact fees. Another thing that we took, took a look at was prioritizing those projects, um, taking a, a look at projects that would be required now or soon to meet current, uh, system deficiencies on down to future projects as the city continues to grow that would have to be implemented at some point in the future. With city staff, we put those into different priorities so that as the staff prepare capital facility plans on an annual basis, they can take a look at this prioritization list and identify which projects should be done first. So again, I just want to thank the city for the opportunity to be involved in this process and it's been a, a great process. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to address those.
Questions for Marv?
Aye.
Please, Councilmember Hagan.
I know, it's a thick book and I, I went through it. It's again, very, very impressive and for, uh, I mean, the mayor's a water man, but for me, it was a good education, so thanks for the, we can see our future. Thanks for the study.
Thank you very much.
I would echo the professionalism in, in the report, so.
Thank you, Marv.
Any other question? Thank you. We'll open the public hearing for item seven D. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the time. I see you all running up to the mic on this one. We'll return, uh, we'll close the public hearing of item seven D and return to the council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Nichols?
I have a motion if there is no discussion.
Please.
I've moved to, uh, adopt resolution fifteen dash twenty-six, approving the final.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion and the motion? Let's vote.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Okay, we're moving on to business items and because we have bond council present and there's costs associated with this, I'm going to take a point of privilege, uh, unless there's, uh, descending vote to move item eight C to the top of the list, um, so that we can get this item discussed without bond council here. Any opposed to that? Okay, item eight C, discussion and possible action regarding resolution fifteen dash two one eight, authorizing issuance of up to seven point two million of storm drain revenue bonds and related matters.
Yes, Mayor and council, as you're aware, uh, uh, you've been talking about various storm drain projects around the city, but the major focus on most of these is down seventy of south over there, uh, and so we have, uh, oh, this city engineer is out in the hall there, Dave Murphy, and he can, you know, if you have any questions on the specifics on some of the projects, you can, uh, ask him on those. We do have with us Brandon Johnson from the, uh, our bond council on this particular project. But, uh, we were asked several months ago to, uh, look towards putting this, uh, together as soon in the new year as we could, so we're having this, uh, super parameters resolution on the agenda for adoption tonight. Uh, included in this would be a public hearing that would take place on the thirteenth of January, uh, which would all be before we would ever sell bonds and go forward.
Do we know the current rate, uh, for AAA bond?
No.
We don't know?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from council on this issue? No, I mean, no, okay. A motion would be in order?
Mayor?
Councilmember Hagan?
I move we approve resolution fifteen two one eight, authorizing issuance of self-stormed rain revenue bonds, directing the publication of notice of bonds to be issued, expression official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from the proceeds of such revenue bond, fixing the parameters for the bond, providing for the holding of the public hearing, authorizing the execution and delivery of the master trust indenture and sup, supplemental indenture and other documents required in connection therewith. Was there more? Authorizing the taking of all other actions for the consummation and transaction concluded by this resolution.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hagan. I will second the motion. Discussion to the motion. See you in another spot.
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Item eight A, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance fifteen dash three zero, ratification of the planning commission approval of preliminary development plan establishing a density of eight point five units per acre in the MFR zone and sixteen point seven units per acre in the HFR zone for the view at fifty-six hundred west, located at fifty-six hundred west, eighty-two hundred south, Uena Land Company applicant. David?
Yes, this was brought before the Council before and was now brought back through consideration. Larry Gardner is here for any questions.
Questions from Council? Well, if you have a question, we've had it presented to us before. Ask a good question. Councilmember Haga?
Larry, it's not so much a presentation, but again, since the last, you know, public hearing we had on this, I, you know, you gotta understand, I'm a two-year, I'm not a freshman anymore, but points, you know, this, this, oh, you need a way.
Right, continue. We'll look at that.
You know, it's my, pardon my ignorance, but we were talking about the developer buying in points by doing A to get C.
Yes.
And could you elaborate that a little more on your, from an expert's part of view?
Okay, so the West Side Planning Area was set up many years ago and it encompassed largely the western half of the city, or western portion of the city, I shouldn't say half, I don't wanna get into how many acres it was. An ordinance was developed at that time called the West Side Planning Area Ordinance that would allow, you know, master plan communities to be built with, you know, rather than the standard Euclidean subdivision, these developments would be built with, should say, the incentive to put different things in by density buy-ups. They'd get density for, say, a park or a trail or standard lighting, that type of thing. So the West Side Planning Area zoning, since then, has been condensed down to what we know as the Highlands developed, or Highlands Project that is owned by, or being spearheaded by the Peterson Development. That is 418 acres, the view is part of that. And so it's been part of that master planned, the Highlands Master Plan for many years now. Now, the Petersons, you're aware, they've built many single-family homes, some commercial, you know, with the Smiths and the McDonald's and that out there. And so it's starting to take shape, and what is coming onboard now is the more high-density multifamily use. And so really what the view does is it falls under the auspices or under the guidance of the Highlands Master Plan Development. Now, to answer your question directly, yes, the view has a, you know, a minimum density is set in the different zones, the MFR, the HFR. It happens to be four in the MFR and nine in the HFR. Now, they can do certain things that are all prescribed or all detailed in the ordinance to obtain density buy-ups, and that is done by percentage. Now, is it a perfect ordinance? No. But it is what we have, and it is what the developer has tried to design their project after. They've been working on this project since before I became employed with this city, so it's well over three years now. And what they have done is follow the ordinance to achieve these density buy-ups. Now, the density buy-ups include, you know, things like playgrounds, buffers along 5600 West, swimming pools, you know, trail treatments, that type of thing, you know, as well as a little higher level of building materials on the building, so you end up with a nice project. So that is the aim of the West Side Planning Area. And so, did that answer your question? I know I'm rambling. And so that's what they've done. Now, since the last meeting and with the WSBA ordinance, the, really, the site plan and subdivision and approval of the development plan by ordinance are left up to the purview or the approval of the Planning Commission. Now, what I've been told is that that ordinance was modeled after some state law that changed a few years back, allowing more of the land use or development pattern to be controlled by the Planning Commission rather than councils. Some councils like that, some don't. You know, the council that adopted this ordinance at that time wanted to go in that direction. And, but, you know, unfortunately, that is what, how this has developed, it's under that ordinance. And so a lot of the questions and concerns at the last meeting were really site plan related and which placement of buildings, you know, types of buildings, where really the authority of the city council this time is to ratify the density of the planning, Planning Commission. Now, the ratification means that you say, yes, we're comfortable in what we've delegated to the Planning Commission as far as density, as far as treatment of the development plan. And from my reading of the ordinance and what legal counsel has, you know, has directed, the two options for the planning, or the city council, excuse me, are to either approve the ratification or remand it back to the Planning Commission to go through the density buy-ups again, to take another look at those. Those are the two options at this point.
Other questions? This is the item that we suspended the rules. Dwayne Moss, would you like to address the council now?
Don Moss?
Don, I'm sorry. I know Dwayne Moss, I apologize. Don Moss?
It's a good last name. Don Moss, resident at Ponzlot Stride. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to discuss and talk again on this item. I spoke at the last city council meeting regarding this item. As a resident on 5600 West, I would suggest on remanding it back to the zoning commission. The concerns that I have as a resident are the concerns that you could easily see, having a high-density, high-density buildings close to our, to our homes, that brings added demand, resources to the city, but that might already be in the works. The concern that I had expressed at the last meeting was the concern of having a high-density building in the MFR zone. The way they were able to do it and do the proposal was how they had situated it, but the problem was, was that the high-density buildings are right next to our, our homes there on 5600 West. And the hope was to have more of a buffer. Since the last city council meeting, I tried to reach out to the developer. I sent an email in October, and I can follow up, maybe I sent it, maybe there was a problem in my emails that they did not receive, but I'm still open to having that input. So my hope and plea would be that you would consider remanding this back to look at the concerns and the impact of this high-density construction. If it's already in the plans, there are things that can be done with buffering. The point that I had brought up in the last meeting, that it seemed like with the plan, a lot of the buffering was to the Mountain View Corridor, which I don't think they need the buffering as opposed to the homes. Thank you for the opportunity to have input. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item from the public? The developer, did you wish to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Again, my name is Paxton Guyman. I'm legal counsel for the applicant. The applicant, as you know, is you went to land development, who is joint venturing this project with just the Peterson Development. I want to applaud Mr. Gardner, because he actually made many of the points that I had intended to make. So it sounds like everybody is coming to a common understanding of what the scope of review is tonight. Sometimes in projects like this, it can be confusing to know what's on the table and what's not, as far as the issues to be considered. And I think the cleanest way to state what's on the table tonight is that there's really only one issue for you to consider, and that is, should you ratify the Planning Commission's density grant or award? As you know, the West Side Planning Area Ordinance has set up a system that's fairly, fairly clear, granted, it might not be as clear as you want, but it's pretty clear as to what needs to be done to satisfy the standards for density buy-ups. And the bulk of the work under your ordinances is given to the Planning Commission to do. You've got a very capable Planning Commission. They obviously went through a lot of time looking at the amenities that are being provided and compared those against the WSBA ordinances to see if the density buy-ups were appropriate. You know the numbers. The developer has actually given every conceivable amenity possible that would have justified an even higher density, but they did come in below the maximum densities. So whereas 18 units per acre were allowed, they'd come in at 16.7 units per acre for the 29 acres under that zone. The other zone that allows for up to nine units per acre, they'd come in at 8.5 units per acre. The point of the matter is that the work's already been done for you, and the only question for you is, did the Planning Commission do something wrong? Did they make a mistake? Did they miss something in the buyout calculation? And if you can't find something that they did incorrectly, then the inevitable conclusion is to go ahead and ratify the density and let this move forward. The ordinances are structured for your staff to then make the final determination. So again, without belaboring the point, I will just say that I believe your staff got it exactly right when they said that all density bonuses granted to this project meet the intent of the WSBA and the density awards. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I believe many of you received a copy of my letter that was submitted, basically explaining these same points, and we appreciate your consideration and approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Anna, 8052 Ponzlot Stride. Mayor, council, staff, thanks for being here tonight. I just wanted to talk a little bit about this business item. I wish we had the graphic, but if you could see, if you could, in your minds, I imagine that graphic, and you've got 5600 West, which runs north to south. On the west side of that is an extension of my neighborhood, the Island Park neighborhood. It's an extension of my neighborhood. And it was designed to be there as a buffer to the high density, which we knew was coming. And the, the initial plan that was put forth three years ago was acceptable. And if you look through the commission, through the Planning Commission, every time they had a chance, they did all the possible buy-downs they could to increase density. And another interesting note is, all the complaints tonight have been about density. I thought we were gonna get away with it, but we have the cap and grade, and their grandfather, because of the cap and grade, they can do this, or their grandfather, so they're not liable for it. We don't have any obligation to change the zoning on this to increase its density to Peterson Development or Uena Land Company, and I don't think we should. Zero obligation. We should keep it the way it was. That piece of property, if you could just imagine it, was set there, it's designed to be a buffer. The current plan, and there was a laundry list of things we all mentioned, the old traffic stud doesn't support the traffic, and in fact, tonight, we just approved a road widening on that very piece of property. And that now changes the plan, whose property you're gonna dive into to open that, that road up two more lanes. Mine or Uena Land Company's? We don't know. We can't reasonably go forward with this. It has to go back. That buffer zoning talks about doesn't exist. There's a road and apartments. Road's not considered buffer. There was building materials, the design was mentioned, the rooftops, density, the buffering, the impact of the neighborhood, all of this, we talked about last time, and none of those issues were even talked about. I feel like I'm trying, they're trying to pigeonhole this into one issue just to get the density, to then slowly build the project, and it's not right. I don't appreciate this type of business practice. And I strongly agree, I do not think we should, should increase density on this property at all. And we have made efforts to reach out and talk to the developer about our issues, and it's gone on, no response. And I appreciate Southworth, Councilwoman Southworth, when you mentioned some of the rules on seven, what was it, C, on how we should continue those type of practices with the land use map. It's very important, and I think we're creating a dead pocket of West Jordan, and that's, it's gonna become undesirable. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll turn to the council now for discussion and action. Councilmember Haga?
So, since we delayed this, I thought we were tabling it so we could get more dialogue with our, with the developers. I'm sorry to say, I saw the attorneys get involved, and I kinda turned my engine off, but however, you know, I look at my, my residency here in West Jordan, and I live on Redwood Road, just off Redwood Road, and it was two lanes. And you think, I remember my wife and I sitting on our porch and saying, isn't it nice having the nice pasture and that? And the reality, I think, we have to face is, we have Smiths here tonight, one of their anchor stores, sitting there across the street from 78th. They need house rooftops. We can't stop development and expect our businesses to not prosper. And the other thing is, if you talk to some of our developers, Garbit, Ivory, and all the rest, they're selling so fast, they're pre-selling. So I, I would be one to continue forward with this project. It's grandfathered in. To be frank with, I've been on council for two years, and it was the first notification I had that this was even being proposed. So, it may be my fault, but for being on the council for two years, it never came in front of us. So I'd like to see us move forward, build the rooftops, delaying that to another process. We're just sending houses and commercial to our neighboring cities. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Conahay?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not so sure that I agree with the percentages that were derived when determining the additional density. First of all, thank you to planning staff for having, taking the time to sit down and talk and talk with me about it and help me understand the logic. I just have a different way of thinking, so not quite in agreement there. The way I read this, it looks like there might be some, some double dipping. For example, in our code, we allow swimming pool up to 2%. Here, they're claiming the swimming pool, 2%, plus the lazy river, an additional 1%. They're talking about playing fields, they're claiming 4%, we allow 4 too. So it looks like they're, they're trying to get that density for each instance in, in which they offer it. So I, I come up with a different value when I, when I add up those items that are specifically under installation of enhanced open space recreational amenities. Then, we also have the section in here for improvement in trail corridors and installation of trail amenities, up to 15%. I, I agree with the 15% on that. But then there's another one where it says a dedication of additional property for trails beyond that require per-city standards. They can get up to 15%. We're giving them the 15% there, but that, that may be accurate, but I don't see anything that really shows where that land lies. I know that on the document provided, it's showing the gaps from building to building, and obviously not all of that's, that's viable, but that's, some of that's also beyond what we would accept anyway. I think they say no more than 50 feet, something like that, and it's shown like 175, or excuse me, 100 plus, no more than 50 additional, so 150, so the map's showing 175, but that's building to building, so it's not actually usable, so I don't think that would all be dedicated, but bottom line is, I'm not sure I agree with all of the numbers that were derived, or at a minimum, I, I don't feel like they're clearly articulated how they were earned. And based on the number of units that are being provided, I think the residents are owed at least a fair explanation as to how those numbers are derived. So this is not a motion, I still wanna hear other thoughts and conversations, but I would prefer that we send this back to the Planning Commission for, for the discussion and examination. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in agreement with Councilwoman Conahay. I feel like the buyouts on this just don't add up to what we're getting as far as the development goes. We count the swimming pool, and then we count the lazy river. The lazy river is part of the swimming pool, so you really are double dipping, in my opinion, there by counting the different top lots as different points. I feel like that also is, is not a fair way to get a buyout and to raise your density. I'm just not comfortable with the density. I do agree with the gentleman that stood up about the buffer. 5600 West is not a buffer, it is a road. It doesn't buffer the houses on the other side of, of this development. So I, I am in agreement that it should go back to the Planning Commission and look at a little deeper. Thank you.
Councilmember Haga?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
That would be in order.
Based on the information set forth in the staff report, the design shown in the view at 5600 development plan, which by the way, is a 118-page, beautiful brochure, and upon the evidence and explanations you see today, I move the city council ratify through ordinance of the Planning Commission's approval of the view at 56. Preliminary development plan located at 8200 South, 5600 West, with a residential density of 8.5 per acres in the MFR zone and 18 points, 16.7 units per acre in HFR zone, for a total of 531 multifamily units on 34.8 acres, subject to conditional, conditions of approval.
You have a motion? The motion will dive back in a second. Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you. Maybe quickly, Mayor Scotty, or whichever, could you talk to me a little bit about these buy-ups and the type of amenities and what, what provisions do we have in place that guarantee the type of quality we're looking for, that, that follow-through on these? But we've just seen in the past where that hasn't been the case, I'm not saying it wouldn't happen here, but tell me a little bit about that.
As far as the amenities being installed?
Well, so we have a plan that says, here's the amenities we're gonna put in, for example, use a pool and a lazy river, park benches and that sort of thing. What type of standards do we have in place for the type of, and open space along the washes? And there's, I think I remember reading that there would be irrigated portions. In the past, we've seen irrigation where it's temporary, and maybe there's some maintenance seats thrown out, and then we end up with weeds and what have you. Is that the type of thing we're gonna get?
No.
With a different level of improvement?
It's a different level. The washes, they wanna differentiate from what else is going on in the Highlands, and they actually wanna make use of the wash, they wanna pipe it, irrigate it, make usable open area in the wash. We've talked a lot about open area tonight and other projects. This actually will be landscaped. It will be a dedicated easement, the public can walk through there, there'd be a trail that connects the trail to the west, to the Mountain View Corridor Trail, that type of thing. As far as the amenities being installed, as far as the final development plan, it will have to follow the preliminary development plan that is submitted. So anything it says in there, it will have to say in the final development plan. As far as what actual amenities will be installed, we'll, we'll get to that, and we'll look at that based on city standards when the final development plan is submitted to staff. Now, as far as them being installed, there will be no certificate of occupancy issued for any of these buildings if they're not installed. That's how we control, we have the final say. We just want to issue a C of all until they meet the intent or meet what they said they were going to do, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilmember Conahay?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate the thought of, well, the recourse is, we, we don't issue the certificate of occupancy, but I know there are other developments where...
but I know there are other developments where that's been issued regardless, and we've had issues after the fact. I believe things have changed, but I just want to share that caution. I still have some concern based on what we've seen, probably what was it, four years ago? But that's the only thought I share.
Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Any for a motion? If that's in order.
That would be in order.
Based on the information provided and my reading of the buy-ups, and really disagreement with the allotments and how those were awarded and administered, I would recommend that the council remand it back to the Planning Commission for further review.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Southworth, and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion.
And I guess ask if our legal team, if I got the verbiage there correctly, is this the term remanded back to the council, is that the one we have to use?
Yes.
Okay.
Specifically.
The buyouts, the allocation, and how those were determined. I think we were a little generous in those.
So that's very vague.
Yeah.
So you don't agree with any of the buyouts, is what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay. It's very difficult for us to go back to the Planning Commission and say, the City Council doesn't like it, so fix it. Specifically, are, we lay off on trails, amenities.
So I would suggest that we won't be able to have this conversation at this point, but we can have that following the meeting.
Councilmember McConaughey has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at page five of the staff report primarily, where it goes through saying, here's what we, the percentage points that we believe should be allocated for each one of these sections, I would like to see some of the explanations as to why, because in the development plan, it doesn't get into some of the detail, like, we're giving them the full 15% for the additional property for the trails. It says you have to have, what was it, trees like every so many feet, shrubs every so frequently. We're not seeing that here, so is that something that's included somewhere else? And is that why not?
To the...
Or some of these others, like the lazy river and the pool, where we say we allow 2% for pools, but here we're giving, we're giving 3%? Or like the park core course, we don't have anything really listed for that, they're asking for 2%. In my mind, it seems like that should be closer to the 1% that we allow for the fitness trail stations. So just a kind of a bulleted list on buyout.
So do you want a full and complete picture of how the density buyouts were arrived at? Is that how I'm interpreting what you're saying? I'm not trying to be difficult, but it gives, we're trying to...
Oh, no, no, no. I know you're not trying to be difficult, but as I'm looking at this, let's see.
Councilman, I'd put a word, Mayor. I wonder if we ought to have our vote first before we have this discussion, because it may be a moot...
That's probably fair.
A moot discussion. I don't mean to catch off, but I just wonder if we ought to...
Okay, comment on the motion, Councilmember Hagan.
First of all, important clarification on the motion. I'm sorry, because it's... Important clarification on the motion, so I'm clear what we're going to vote on. Because we're in a motion right now.
I basically have just to remand it back to the Planning Commission based on the reasons to relook at the buyouts and how they were calculated.
Again, I'm just going to speak against it. I want this development to move forward. If the other councilmembers have more experience on high density this way, and the planes and all that, I'll concur with them. But I still think residents need to understand that the fact is, 5600 West is going to be Redwood Road. You've got to accept that. It's going to go all the way through, and you're going to have, it'll intersect at 86. And I've been there, I've been where you've been. I have Golden Corral in my front yard, so that's what happens when the city grows. So I'm going to oppose the motion, just because I want rooftops now, I want that whole area to grow, and it won't grow until we can start putting people and rooftops there. So that will be an opposition to the motion, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth.
Yeah, in case there is any, anyone who misconstrues what that motion was for, it was not, this is not because I think that the density should be there, or it's not going to be there, because it will be there, there will be density, it's just the amount. And we need to be careful about how we calculate this, and if that, and I think it is in our best interest to take one more look at this. And so it's not that I think that this, there will be density here, and it's probably a very good location for it, it'll be right on the intersection of a major freeway one day, on the confluence of 7800 South, and so this is, this is the location when you talk about where density goes, it is. But what and how is worth taking time, because this will have a very long-term impact on the city of West Jordan. So just so that, that is clear. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hanson?
We've talked so much, I'm not sure.
This is to remand it back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration of the buyouts.
Yes.
Mayor Rob?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote passes 6 to 1 in favor.
Councilmember Rice?
As far as my concerns, I opposed them last time, and I think that, as for me, some of those concerns that I had about buffering, making sure that, you know, in the zoning, we had a medium density in between the high density and the low density of 5600, it didn't seem like it came to us as a buffer, even though it's zoned as a buffer. And I had a concern with that. I had a concern with piping, piping the ditch. I worry that that could become a safety concern in a 100-year flood, 50-year flood. There were other concerns that were raised at that time that I think that should also be addressed by the Planning Commission.
Councilmember Hagan.
So since we're given, I'm assuming recommendations to staff and the developer. But I would like to see if the developer comes back, the connections to the trails with Mount View Corridor, because they talked about how we were going to have a walkable community there. I think that's kind of what I call a pearl, you know, where if you have high density, you can walk within your own community. That's kind of what we're trying to create, I think, with things. The other things, you know, I've talked to actually the developer about soccer, 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 and that would be one of my recommendations. An amenity that our children can use, soccer, or some kind of recreational, and paid for by the HOA or an assessment that's already, I think, established down there. So those would be my recommendations.
Item 8B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 15-217 authorizing the implementation of the proposed utility fee, sustainable funding for the perpetual maintenance of parks, trails, and open space. Ryan.
Point of order, Mayor, we pass our council real time.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I just wanted to make a motion to extend the meeting. Let's try to go 9:20. We have two items left.
Do you think you could do this item in 10 minutes?
Try.
I don't think so.
I'd say 30.
Can you do this item in 10 minutes?
I don't, I've had two requests for ending at 9 this evening, which is our council rules. Is there a second for the motion, I guess? There's motion on the table.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion to the motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember McConaughey.
I'm concerned about the hour, I'm trying to rush through this. I know there's genuine concern for the parks, and I want to make sure that we get it right. And because of that, I would offer an alternative motion, that we continue this till our next council meeting.
I'll start at that. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Councilmember Hagan.
It's a cap motion, so...
It's a substitute motion.
I think it was an alternative, yeah, I guess it was. You all got to turn me out.
It's two months, dude. It's late, evidence of why I would like to continue.
Councilman, would you accept a friendly amendment, that we continue with this 20 minutes, we have to at least get some of this discussion through, see if we can at least get to a point? The reason being, I think this particular council has made some significant goals the last two weeks, or the last two years, as a whole, this seven-member body, concerning parks, and we're really at the very end, two meetings left for this council to finish through on priorities we've made? So if we can maybe get somewhere in the next 20 minutes, pick this up again at the next council, I have no problem talking about it again. But we may get to a point where we have some agreement in the next 20 minutes. Maybe not, but if we can...
Personally, I think 20 minutes might be good to give us a recap of where we've been over the last two years, but I don't think it gives us time to make any additional progress. I would...
And gives us something to think about.
I would deny that from the amendment.
At least talk about it for the next two weeks, and then we have, we can discuss it in two weeks, and...
I'd prefer we go with it, see where it goes in the next...
Let's vote.
Okay. I'll respect...
Let's vote.
Okay. Sorry, Ryan.
Councilmember Rice?
Let's see how it goes.
Point of clarification.
Can you to the next meeting?
Can you, this item and the next to the next meeting?
Yes, well...
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
No.
Mayor Rob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes 4 to 3 in favor.
Would you accept the motion?
Move the adjournment, Mayor?
Second.
We need either remarks.
I don't think a move to adjourn is debatable.
Yeah, that's right. I think that's right. We have to vote. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we say something?
Could I at least speak to the motion now that we've already voted?
We're already here, right? Say something.
Good enough, eh? Okay.
Sorry, Chris, you reserved the time, I got it off.